Clicking, or I was trying to edit them down, like to...
This is Steve Rao, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
We're not gonna be doing video, are we? No?
Say it one more time?
Just the audio, no video, right?
I'm so sorry, it's a little noisy in here, I cannot hear you.
Just the audio, not the video, just the audio, right?
Well, I'm sharing the screen with you right now, can you see it?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna know, I'm only gonna be on audio, not video, right?
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, alright, I have my suit on, but, okay.
Oh, I mean...
As long as your camera's not on, we don't see you.
Yeah, if you would like to be seen, you can definitely turn your camera on.
I don't know if that's...
And I just would like to confirm that you can see the screen.
Is it got the three pictures, me, Vicky, and the other one?
Yes, so far, and then right there, you see the agenda. Alright, well, thank you so much.
Is the mayor there?
Yes, the mayor is here, he's not in the room right now, but he's here.
I can't participate in a closed session, I do have a work engagement around eight o'clock, but I'll just have to, um, I'll just have to keep waiting and see, I don't know how long meetings gonna go. It's alright, I'll just have to deal with it.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, I actually can text you...
I can hear you both.
Or message you, um, and let's discuss. It's just really hard to hear in the room right now.
It was his observation, not mine, but they... If there were no people, shouldn't start the stream until they're ready. And that means they really do need to be ready. But that's something we need, yes.
Okay, I'll put another...
Patricia. I just too... And if we... To be in that, definitely.
Yeah, because the other part of the... Like, if I'm that far out. Of the video.
Yep.
That's what I'm going to do. That's different.
That's the first time I've ever heard of the other guy in the street. I mean, that's really... That's awesome. This company was just... When we first used them, there was a... Really, you're gonna really set up something, set yourself for... And so... Say that the thing has to have a reason. Are they using... Okay, that's good to hear. So it's not just a matter of one person, it's a couple. And then you have the others. They just have a good team. Yeah.
The one you hear? Um...
We love you, I appreciate you. I guess.
Yeah, I remember, we talked about it a lot, telling you that the process, and I think that...
Yes. But I'm not thinking you gave it to me. No, you... I know, I know. Outside of this story.
Well, that's good, though.
It is.
You have to pay an interaction, so you can get one, yeah.
Perhaps, you have a good idea. You know, this season starts, I have to start supporting this. Just... For this first six...
Okay. Yeah.
Funny. You need to... Different...
I heard.
You don't make sure... Things like this, the person that's... And then you go back, get it on the side of the...
Me, I think that's...
At least we... At least it's... Our rooms. Community council. So we're in public. We're having a... Go. Alright, it's time to follow this. I started by the five first... Sorry. Dr. Alt.
Something's wrong.
Some people. Yeah.
Well, I have a plan, it's that. Yeah, I see, I'm sure. Oh, I'll go there. I love the thought of the first yard. Oh, yeah, that's what I got, I was playing. I had... You kept like the fire, I got the fire.
You could do that, you could do something.
Okay.
Unless you get there, at least you like...
Yeah.
What's the one I do?
Town manager Zudma, ready to begin? Okay. Council members, please make sure your mics are on, thank you. Good evening, I call the September tenth meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. This evening, council members Rao and Scroggins Johnson are participating remotely. Thank you to those here in person with us tonight, those watching the livestream, and those who are watching the recording of this meeting. Our town mission statement, which helps guide our decisions tonight and in the future, is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. Officer Kay Kurtz is our sergeant in arms for this evening's meeting, we thank you for your attendance. This evening, I'll be leading our invocation. I'd like to begin by saying welcome, well, I'd like to say, Morrisville is one of several highly educated areas in the Sun Belt, seeing strong growth in its life sciences and tech industry, and starting to benefit from investments in emerging tech, clean energy, and artificial intelligence. As we continue our smart city journey, let each of us, elected officials, staff, and residents alike, awake each day dedicated to helping others and looking for ways to be good neighbors and good stewards of our environment, our business climate, our educational system, and our welcoming, family-friendly, and inclusive town that we love, Morrisville. All who are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share at this time? And we've already heard from the legal staff a couple of times about the HSNC item. So, I would like to make a request of the fellow council members, if they're willing, if we can move item ten B, as in boy, up to right after admin reports, I believe that's a very brief item, and that way the applicant doesn't have to wait the entire meeting to say their piece, I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda with that adjustment.
I'll make that motion with that adjustment.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Mayor Potem Garamella, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously five zero. There are two administrative reports this evening, administrative reports are intended to be for information only. Council members, do you have any questions? Okay, seeing one?
I do.
Oh, yes, please. Councilmember Fender, was it on the quarterly capital product update, or the Morrisville Means Business?
The, um, project update.
Project update, okay, if we could have Mark Spanioli, our Director of Engineering, approach the microphone, please. I think we're gonna see you again later, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Hey.
Good evening.
Good evening, sorry to do this to you again.
No sorry is necessary.
I would prefer that we don't make project updates a administrative item, because I think the public deserves to hear some of these statuses.
Okay.
And give me a second, I'm trying to pull it up on my computer. But the couple I had questions on were the, um, yeah, the, uh, the South parking lot of Church Street Park, yeah, this one. Yeah, and a question on the bullet down near the bottom, sports courts are complete, pending sports lighting and repairs to basketball court from MLCC event.
Yes.
So what happened there, wire repairs needed?
So during the use of the courts as part of the cricket events, the players were walking in and out to use the facilities, and their cleats were causing surface damage to the asphalt. That was an unfortunate and unforeseen thing that happened, because it wasn't like vehicles were coming in, it was actually their cleats, their shoes.
So is this gonna happen every year, or...
No, I think the idea going forward is to put some additional measures in place to prevent that, put some plywood down and so forth to protect the surface.
Okay, but, so, just for the public's information too, so you're showing here that the anticipated completion date of these facilities would be the end of October.
That's correct.
Okay, so that, and that would include the basketball court, the volleyball court.
That's correct, the multi-sport court and all the facilities, the picnic shelter, the restrooms, the entire park will be completed.
Okay, great, thank you, and then the other question I had was on the dog park. So, I believe my question was on just the, so this says, completion date winter twenty twenty-four, is that December or February?
So, just to give you a quick project status, the project is out to bid right now. We have the bid scheduled to come in September twentieth, I believe, followed by just a review of the bids, and then putting it on the council agenda for award, which will happen in October. We'll start construction before the end of the calendar year, and we probably won't finish until just before the spring of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So winter of twenty twenty-four to us means all the way through the, maybe we shouldn't have put twenty twenty-four.
That's an optimistic view of winter twenty twenty-four, but, and that's why I wanted to clarify, because if you, construction hadn't started by the end of the year, would have been pretty quick.
Understood.
Alright, I think that's all the questions I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything else, councilmember buddy?
Yeah, just really quickly, could you just explain to me why the players were walking across the basketball courts at all, like, is it necessary for them to do that to get to the restrooms for some reason? Or...
Some of the facilities were placed inside the court area, that was part of the laydown for the way the cricket matches were set up. I'm not that familiar with the logistics. I'm just familiar with the reason why the damage occurred, it was from the cleats, the shoes they were wearing. It caused some surface raveling on the top, so it's gonna have to be resurfaced.
There, I, I'm sorry, now, now I can't let this go, are you saying there were porta-potties inside the basketball enclosure?
I think so, but I didn't go during the events, I'll admit, so I don't know for sure.
Okay.
I can, I can get you more information and get it over to you.
Hang on, I think Councilmember Garamella has something to add.
My understanding was because we don't have dressing room, so those courts were converted as dressing rooms where they go in, change, and come back, because they had to pad up and all those things, so they basically go to that area and do it, and I think that might be the reason they have that as a holding cell, because there's nowhere they can, they can come to the dugout, but if they had to change or go to restroom, all those kind of things, it's done at the back of those courts.
Okay, appreciate that, I think we should probably get a handle on that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions on either of those items? Okay. Seeing none, thank you very much, we'll hear from you in a little while.
Yeah, sure.
Now I'm skipping forward to the words for ten B. Okay, so we're skipping forward to item ten B, and that action item on the agenda is the proposed major amendment to the Park West Village Mixed-Use Plan Development District Discussion, and we invite attorney Neil Gosh of Morningstar Law Group, representing the owners of Park West Village, to come forward and update council on this item, please.
Hey, this is Neil Gosh from the Morningstar Law Group, good evening, Mayor Cowley, members of the Town Council. There's no update today, we are just requesting to continue this item, so we can come back to you all when you have a full council, hopefully, and we can come back with some additional information.
Okay, thank you for the update, any questions at this time? Seeing none, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to our presentations, we have two presentations this evening, the first is the engineering department presentation, and we invite Director Mark Spanioli to come forward to facilitate the presentation, I'm glad you didn't go far.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, good to see you again, I'm Mark Spanioli, Director of Engineering. I usually come up here to talk about projects, or give project updates, or a contract award, and sometimes we even meet outside to do ribbon cutting, so today's a different day for me. We're gonna be giving you a presentation about engineering. I was told I could just show the video and sit down, but then I was told, no, you gotta come back and give some more information, so I'll be doing that first, and then we can watch the video after. I did wanna start with talking about our mission statement, our mission is to provide the most efficient collaborative and customer service oriented team that will support our residents, as well as the other departments of the town in Morrisville. And we strongly believe that every day, and we work to achieve that every day. Our group is divided into three divisions, we have a capital products group, development services, and stormwater management. We're made up of fourteen staff members, five of which are professional engineers, one licensed highway contractor, one certified floodplain manager, and combined, we have over two hundred and fifty years of engineering experience in public works planning, design, and construction. So this is who we are, and I do wanna take a moment to recognize everybody that came out tonight from our group. I'd like them to stand up, and I'm gonna call them out by name, because I really love these people, and they really make my job easy. So, everybody in my department, please, please take a stand for a moment, and I'm gonna call you out by name, so you can see them in person. We, almost all of them made it, but a couple of them had some other engagements. Levi Henry, Ben Mills, Lee Hotchkiss, Brad Ganyong, Kitty Thomas, Kyle Cooper, Tony Victor, Jennifer Bullock, Eric Pearson, and Brandon Goff. Thank you so much for coming, guys, appreciate it. I just wanna point out our core values, these values are, coincide with the town values, and our team developed these values for themselves. We are very proud of our teamwork, our... We are very proud of our teamwork, our integrity, happiness, and innovation in our department. We had a number of accomplishments from this last year. We had construction completion of the fire station number three. We finished the basketball renovations at Shiloh Park. We finished the MCP tennis and pickleball courts. And we also finished the Wolfsnare Box Culvert, which happens to be in the picture in the center of the lower section. We're working on a number of design elements. We're working on in-house design of a culvert at Cedar Fork Park. And we have consultants working on a stream restoration design for Sawmill Creek Greenway. We have staff members expanding their certifications and education. Lee Hotchkiss completed his NC State Road Scholar Program. And Brad Ganyon completed the Certified Floodplain Manager Training and he's ready to take his exam. As part of internal controls, we have developed a CIP project tracker and we continue to develop our asset management for stormwater infrastructure in GIS. As required by the state and behind the scenes, most people don't even know we're doing this, we have developed our 10-year update for the Secondary Communitative Impact Master Management Plan. This is required by the state from every town in North Carolina. And this plan does a thorough review of the town's planning, environmental, wildlife, land use, utilities, parks, capital projects, and demographics across town. It's about the size of a, I don't know, two bibles wide. This is the major update this year that we worked on and we do a bi-annual update for the next 10 years after this update. We regularly work on our engineering, design, and construction manual updates. We do that every two years, this year was no different. We oversee the street sweep program for the town and contract with an outside vendor to accomplish this effort. And as required by the state, we are a permitted municipal separate storm sewer system community which requires public education, maintenance, and inspections annually as we regular, as we have regular audits that we must comply with. And we recently renewed our NPD as permanent National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit with the state. We have a number of influences and challenges that I broke up here into five categories. For private development, as you know, land is shrinking here in Morrisville. We can't always forecast future development in the town. So we're slowly thinking that there's gonna be a redevelopment as we move forward into the future. We're cross-training our staff to be ready for that and be prepared to work in any of our divisions in our, in our department. For capital projects, this has obviously been a challenge for us. Nationwide cost increases, community needs increasing, competing projects, and limited funding availability. We've been working on doing value engineering from the onset on all of our projects going forward. And thanks to the council for helping us implement the process of having a cost estimator firm onboard. You actually allocated funds for us to make that happen. That's been very helpful as we're getting cost estimating done from the beginning of the project. I wanted to highlight grants and partnerships. We work with our grants team and have partnerships with other municipalities, other agencies, state, city, local places to help support some of our project funding. I put climate in here because sometimes it gets overlooked, but stormwater is extremely important as we implement the stormwater master plan projects while keeping up the newest regulations that come in regularly. We educate all of the town staff and the public on pollution prevention and legal stormwater pollution outreach. And probably unique to our department, we coordinate with all departments in the town, primarily through our capital projects. We work, we have, we have what we consider client departments. If we build a new fire station, all of a sudden the fire department's our client. And we work with all the departments to implement projects from finance to budget to all internal departments. We even work with IT. And, and actually somebody had pointed out, I think it was Eric in our group, had pointed out, we do work even with HR because we have to work with Chuck Queen for facility liability. So our current project initiatives, we have a number of projects going on. This is, this is a short list. I added, add many more. I think Giselle pointed out that, listen, you better say it's add many more because we do a lot more than that. So I say, yeah, you're right, I appreciate that. But there's just a few projects, some we actually lead, some of them we partner with, with DOT, for example. And others are our partnership, like the Town Center Project. I won't bore you with the status of Town Center, we're about to see some of that this evening. But we are already working through our Capital Products Group with Town Center on the design implementation. And we'll take the project on when we go through reconstruction together with the, with our partners. Public Works, that's another collaboration with the county. We're working together on the Wade County Convenience Center and the Public Works Facility. So that's a collaboration with Wade County. The dog park, as you know, will start before the end of the calendar year. We have numerous sidewalk projects, gap projects. We're working on Lewis Stevens, Church Street, International Drive. And we're actually planning to take a look at what other gaps we're missing throughout the town. Then we have partnership projects with DOT, NC 54 widening, McCrimmon widening and flyover, Airport Boulevard extension. Our stormwater group is working on the stream restoration and greenway project. We're working on intersection projects, various ones, including the Morrisville Parkway access management study that you guys have seen recently. And the various stormwater projects have many more. So our three divisions are looking at their specific challenges and planning ahead for them. Our Development Services Group, as I said earlier, private development forecast is unpredictable. And cross-training to be ready for those changes in development needs is critical. Our Capital Products Group, we look at available funding and value engineering from the onset on our projects just to keep them moving forward. And stormwater, one of the things that we've seen is that there's multiple SCMs coming online for private development. And those are gonna require annual inspections and make sure that we're enforcing maintenance practices for all those private stormwater control measures in town. So you'll see further, in a few slides, you'll see how many are actually coming online in the future. So I took advantage to provide facts and figures for each division. And I will point out that each division only has four staff members. So you'll see that we do a lot of work for each one of these groups. Here in Development Services, we exceed 96% for our plan review completion by the due date. The total number of projects that were completed in the last 12 months, private development projects, were 30. We had over 2,000 site and construction plan reviews that were completed over the last 12 months. And that's, that's for projects that came in through planning and engineering, site plans, construction plan approvals. We had almost 800 building permit reviews and those are for plans that come in through the Building Department, through Shanney's Group, that get reviewed by our department as well. We collected over 51,000 in permit fees and we actually performed over 780 inspections last fiscal year. For our Capital Products Group, again, four staff members managing and overseeing the projects for the town. Last year, we had 20 projects in design. Eight projects at various stages of construction, over $46 million in construction projects, $3.6 million in outside funding that we received through DOT and other sources. And we're almost at four miles of new sidewalks that are gonna be implemented in some form, whether in design or construction at this point. And lastly, Stormwater, another group with only four staff members. These folks actually did the physical inspections of 225 SCMs for their annual maintenance inspection throughout town. There's 38 more SCMs under construction right now, so that will add to the inventory of another 38 SCMs. Those are all privately owned and maintained, but we are required to perform inspections on them and provide reports to the owners as to things they need to rectify and fix up. As part of our continued public education, we had 480 social media posts. We have $2.5 million in public stormwater products in process right now. And I'm not sure if everybody knows this, but we run the program for the street sweeping across town. We have six, six street sweeping cycles per year and they do 172 miles of curb line swept at each cycle. So quite a bit of street sweeping. We actually do that to an outside vendor and we're continually looking to improve the cycles. All right, so these are the town values. We have, we have examples of how the town values are used every day by our department. I wanna point out the dedication, our very own Jennifer Bullock. She has supported inspections and planning during times when we had staff shortages. So she's worked across three departments to keep things moving. Integrity, our CIP team developed a checks and balances system of invoice processing with finance to meet audit requirements, so we keep in check. Courtesy, our very own Brandon Goff. He actually saw a visually impaired person trying to make it through a crosswalk, so he got out of his car, had him traverse the sidewalk and helped him across the street. I thought that was very courteous of Brandon. And innovation, our stormwater team, they utilize GIS technology to track and provide asset management for all of our stormwater infrastructure. All right, this is my favorite slide. And again, I wanna thank everybody for coming from my group. Some of them didn't wanna give me some of these fun facts, some of them were pretty generic. I'm gonna lead off with Levi Henry. He's on here, but it says that he hates snakes and will avoid them at all costs. Actually, he told me later that what he really wanted to say was when he was a small child between the ages of two and five, he actually played the drums in his dad's band in Philadelphia. And when he was five, he played the drums, he did some dancing at an Off-Broadway Theater in Philadelphia. I thought that was pretty cool, so, I thought that was pretty talented of a little guy. He'll kill me later for embarrassing. One of Eric Pearson's favorite vacation spots is in the US Virgin Islands. He did some tent camping. Brandon Goff actually told me that when he was in Public Works, he was working at the Historic Christian Church on the staircase that enters the church. And he actually used some of the original bricks from the structure to build the staircase. I thought that was kinda cool. Kitty Thomas keeps this quiet, but he actually speaks five languages, not four. I may have miswrote that here. I was pretty excited that he could actually speak five languages. English is not his native language, I don't think, but he speaks very well and we're proud of him. Quentin Bradley is a big-time sports fan. Ben Mills loves to play basketball in his spare time. Lee Hotchkiss was a childhood actor for three years in Los Angeles. I thought that was kinda cool. This one's very interesting. Tim Johnson, I don't think he's here today. Tim Johnson, actually, when he was much younger, donated a kidney to his brother. And the joke was the doctor ordered him to drink a beer every night for the rest of his life to make up for it, so. Tony Victor lived in five states, including North Carolina, and he's got a master's in education. Kyle Cooper hiked the Seven Sisters Cliffs in England. Brad and I, the engineering dorks, Brad Ganyon, he, he actually worked on a project in Michigan where the records that he pulled to work on that project were from the 1800s. So it was like on parchment paper or something. And I worked on engineering projects in five states, including Alaska and two islands in the Caribbean. Hope I didn't miss anybody, let me see.
Oh, you missed Jennifer.
Oh my God, I'm so sorry. Jennifer, Jennifer was funny. She actually told me, she's like, I want my fun fact to be that I love going to the dentist and getting my teeth cleaned. I said, okay, cool. So, did I miss anyone? Raise your hand if you're okay. So, before I start the video, I do wanna give a special thanks to the Communications Department. Will and his team, Rock, she spent hours working on this with our, with our group. Laura and Wendy also took a lot of video footage for us, so it was really exciting, so. Is it video time or do I have to answer questions first? What would you like? Roll the tape, all right, let's do it. Yeah, press F11, is it F11? You'll do it.
When people think of the Engineering Department, they often think about the construction of town parks, roads, and facilities. Like the bones and muscles of a body, solid, dependable, and structural in nature. It's so much easier to focus on the end product that we sometimes lose sight of the rest of engineering, the details that make it all work. What you don't see is what keeps those bones moving and what makes the town breathe. A body cannot work without systems, the heart, the brain, and the lungs, all working seamlessly. In Morrisville, you can feel engineering everywhere. Engineering is a big part of the reason why your kids can shoot hoops or dive into an indoor pool all year, why families can find a space to play soccer or watch cricket, and why there's always a pickleball court ready for a match. We don't just build it, we give life to the spaces where living well happens. Our Development Services Group works to review and inspect private development to ensure that roads, sidewalks, and parking lots are built right. Like the bones in our body, they must withstand the test of time and provide for solid infrastructure to support our growth. Our stormwater management team are the heroes that oversee the veins and arteries that carry away floodwaters, channeling the chaos of nature into something manageable. They design, inspect, educate, and adapt so when it rains, it flows away smoothly, leaving the town standing tall and dry. The Capital Projects Group, they're the muscles, showing our strength and making the town proud. Overseeing the $46 million in town projects that shape the future, building new parks, facilities, sidewalks, and even the latest fire station. We make sure everything is built right, from design through turning the lights on. Together, these teams are the lifeblood of Morrisville. They're the ones who merge the visible and the invisible, the big moves and the small. They're not just building a town, they're building an able body that can stand up to whatever the future throws at it. So the next time you're enjoying a smooth drive, a peaceful park, or just the security of knowing your talent can weather the storm, remember the people who make it all possible. They're not just engineers, they make live connected, live well, a reality for life in Morrisville.
I'm gonna go sit down.
That was wonderful. Any questions or comments for Engineering Team? Councilmember Body, followed by Mayor Potem Garamella, please.
First, I really liked your video. It's so easy sometimes to forget what a beautiful town this is.
It is a beautiful town.
When you see it from the top, it's really stunning, so thank you for that. I also, I just really wanted to comment on one thing, which was that, I, well, I'm astounded by the amount of work that your department does, but you know that because I say that pretty much all the time.
Thanks.
But I, I did wanna say that I didn't realize that one of your team's core values was happiness. And I've probably, over the past 20 years, I've listened to at least 100 department presentations from big groups and small. And I've never heard happiness called out as a core value. And I think that when you look at the amount of work that your team is accomplishing with a very limited number of people, I think that, that you're able to do that because happiness is one of your core values. I'm really, I'm really proud of your team and I'm really, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mayor Potem Garamella, followed by Councilmember Johnson, please.
Excellent presentation. And it's more of a comment that I had to make it as an engineer. I thought the last few seconds that you'll be sitting on the chair and the rest of the department sitting down in the head. Like, I don't know which one did that, but I think it was Public Works or something, right? Like you and the chief were sitting down and listening to them.
I wasn't in that video. I don't think I was in that video, but it was the Public Works.
Yeah, so, so I thought like as an engineer, you know, you're pretty much oversee or touch.
Pretty much, yeah, pretty much.
But excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember Ralph, please.
So I have a question, but one of the nicest things about these department presentations has been the fact that not only do we learn something from every presentation, but we get to see folks that we typically don't get to see. And that really has been amazing to be able to see you all and to be able to thank everybody for what they do for the town of Morrisville, for our residents. And, and I agree with Councilmember Ralph. This is a wonderful town, it's a beautiful town. And I did appreciate that picture too. So it, I think we, you know, we don't often get to see the town from above and it is a pretty amazing place. So I'm grateful for all your hard work. My question, or the question I have is on slide nine and I'm gonna talk a little bit, or ask a little bit about the stormwater, about the stormwater control measures, those SCMs. And there are quite a bit of them around town. And you, obviously, you're doing a great job inspecting them, but how many? And you, obviously, you're doing a great job inspecting them, but how many in total are there around town? Do you have any, oh, sorry, I should have asked, I should have asked in advance.
No.
Just, I'm just curious, because that is a really important service that we give to our residents, because they're not technical folks that probably know how to manage an SEM. So I guess that's my other question too, is how is that all going? And how are those SCMs being maintained out there? Is there anything about that program that we need to be aware of?
So I'll see if Ben can tell me the number. I don't know the number from memory. I think it's under 300, but I can't remember the number. I will tell you that it's interesting, because, you know, most of the SCMs are, you know, taken care of by an HOA, right? So an HOA has it on their, on the property. Generally, they're pretty well taken care of. This year, we did have an uptick in violations that needed to be addressed. You know, most of the HOAs use an outside vendor to, you know, maintain the SEM, do the landscape maintenance and et cetera. So we have been working with all of them, and generally, they come back into compliance. It's all we really want, right? We just want them to keep it clean, pollution-free, and operating properly, right? So it works pretty well. I mean, we haven't had any egregious issues where we've had to take serious action. But I don't know, do you remember the number, Ben? There you go. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you. Oh, and that's fabulous, the work you do, that you inspected, then. That's, that's pretty, that's almost all, you know.
Yeah. We're not required to inspect all of them each year. I think it's every three years, but I can't recall. But anyway, it's not, so we try to get to them each, every year, all of them every year.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then that just reminded me of one more thing. I do have to thank Ben Mills in your department and actually our deputy town manager as well. They're on the Jordan Lake One Water Coalition with me and help as support, as staff support. And so thank you very much for, for your efforts there too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ralph, please.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank you for an excellent presentation. And the mayor mentioned smart cities in his indication and bi-mental sustainability. My question, and then I have a comment. My question to the director is, these are great facts and figures you're presenting. Is there any way we could eventually create a kind of a smart city dashboard, like what we have for our facility usage, so that we can benchmark how we're doing with stormwater across, you know, different regions and show the residents, you know, the value that they're getting for sustainability, given the fees they're going to fund this part of the department?
Thanks, Councilmember. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's something we can do. We have information that we can gather from the other towns in the, in the triangle and make those comparisons. Yeah, we can do that. I'll make a note to work with our staff to come up with something.
Yeah, if you could, I mean, because I think a lot of these technologies are cross-departmental. And the other thing, just a comment, these videos are amazing. So I know you probably have already set up the stat, but there's a link or something we can get, and they've probably already been put up there. I think it's just a great way for the council to showcase to our residents and even other local government the outstanding work that we're doing. Because, you know, I think this really brings to life these different departments, and I tell you, it's just amazing. But I can get offline with you all, work with our communications department, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to share, I'm very thankful when you guys table at like Western Bank Farmers Market and things like that. A little extra shout out to Tony Victor, who's doing the social media, makes it playful, makes it fun, gets more engagement, which is really pretty great. I was wondering if you could maybe share just a little bit about the Wolfsnare Lane and how it used to be a real problem and how you guys really worked with the people who live down there. I went to one of those meetings and how you guys were really proactive about letting them know what's going to happen, why the road's going to be closed for how long and stuff like that. So just a real brief thing.
Yeah, I wish I had a bigger picture, but it's, it's that project. So Wolfsnare actually was an interesting project. You saw some photographs of it prior to the installation of the new box culvert. There was some severe flooding that happened there periodically. We worked with the, with the neighbors and the community to come up with a solution to the problem. We engaged a consulting firm, we, we got it designed, we then went to construction. But we had heavy coordination with the neighbors to make sure that they could get in and out of the community, because this actually, this culvert sits right on one of their main driveways in and out of their, their community. Luckily, there's another driveway they were able to use. And we worked quickly to get this installed. We actually finished this recently, and it's already stand at the test of time, because we checked it after some of the big storm events and all the previous flooding that had occurred. It doesn't happen anymore. We're pretty proud of it. It's pretty cool, because typically you would have much smaller culverts, so this one was pretty large for the area.
Yeah. Really nice job to all of you. Thank you all very much, and thanks to the comms department once again. Keep on raising the bar, bringing classical music into this one. Don't know what's next, we'll have to see. Okay, I don't see any other questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
The second presentation is the Town Center Streetscape Mixed Use Building Renderings, and we invite town manager Brandon Zudima to come forward to facilitate the presentation.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Thank you again for your time tonight. So I'm going to very quickly pass this over to Todd Rankin with Singh Development. The brief history on this is that we came for you back in May of this year, when Singh had some initial sketches of what their multifamily and the other private development would look like on Block A of this project. At that time, there were some questions asked about how that appeared and some suggestions and feedback were provided. So Singh has used that feedback to do some updated work on design, and they're here to share that with you tonight, so that you see where they are headed with their project. And I'm going to turn it to Todd.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the council. It's nice to be back here in front of you all again. As, as town manager Zudima mentioned, we were here in May, and you saw our initial building design and renderings. And there was a lot of comment that went back and forth, and we took all of that to heart, and we went to work. So what we're here tonight to do, and I'm joined by Barrett Dixon, he is a partner and the design director at Jay Davis Architects. They've been on the project since the very beginning, before we teamed up with you all on this project. So Barrett's been part of this project for a very long time. And so I'm really going to let him kind of dive into the specifics of what we've changed, why, and the materials and the details, and where we, where we have really focused on. What you'll see across all of the elevations, some areas have some greater changes and elaboration to them. Other elevations may not look like they've changed a lot, but that's where the details really come into play. We've spent a lot of time with the renderings to make sure that they are as accurate as possible, both in the building elevation, materials, as well as the streetscapes and the landscapes. So the plantings you see are generally accurate in their portrayal of like a species, color patterns, those things. So I guess really with that, I'm going to hand it over to Barrett, and we'll be happy to answer questions as we go along, or we can go through the whole presentation and then follow up with questions after that.
Good evening, council mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to share this with you guys. Oh, cool. Just to start with the site plan, before we get into the, the updated renderings, I think it's important to remember why each facade looks like it does, because it's designed very much in response to the streets upon which they stand. So we have Carolina and Town Hall Drive, and we've always seen these as sort of more civic expressions of this building onto much more important sort of public streets. They are themselves a little bit different. Carolina, which faces the park, needs to be extremely open and engaged. The intent there is to provide as much opportunity for residents of the building and non-residents and retail patrons and library users and parkgoers to feel as much as, as a part of, as much a part of this building as they possibly can be. Transitioning on Town Hall Drive, the idea here is really about connecting to the library. So we have these two buildings that stand right next to each other, one of which is a civic project, it's of civic importance. We needed to reflect that along Town Hall Drive. Turning on to the other two remaining streets, Jeremiah and Foxglove, very different condition. We have residential single-family neighborhoods, so the intent here was to put everything down to scale, make it as pedestrian-friendly as we possibly could. So looking at the facade along Carolina of the library is just to the left here, you can see there's sort of several layers of the way we're engaging the public here. There's the wide streetscape that leads to active retail. We have a amenity space there in the corner, amenity space on top of the building, and we also have this really great pedestrian passageway that leads you back from the garage. Brick passageway between the library and the building, that'll be the access for people coming from the garage, either be part of the library, or the retail, or the, or the park. We haven't made a lot of changes here, there wasn't a lot of feedback here other than good job. So I do want to recognize though, to take a peek at this corner. We particularly love the engagement and the openness of this corner, and we'll see that repeated here in a second when we go to the Town Hall Drive facade, which hasn't changed a lot, if you look at it, sort of squint your eyes and look at it from a big-picture massing standpoint. Because we do believe there's still a lot of really great, strong gestures here, one of which is the connection back to the library, the materiality. Enough of a civic scale, but I want to temper that by saying that we went back, we added a lot of detail to reduce that perceived scale, to make it feel more like a residential building. That was one of the primary comments we heard last time. We'll do a zoom in here in a minute that shows you some of those specific things, one of which was the corner that looks to the library. And that's when I, when I want to reference the previous slide, we basically took that corner and copied it here. So there's sort of three of these, these sort of darker facade corners, and this one becomes a little bit of a hint, sort of a prelude of what you're going to get as you walk, as you work your way down Carolina, as you sort of get your first glimpse of it on Town Hall Drive. So zooming in to some of those details, there's a lot of them. One was the opening of the corner, there's the more brick detailing, the balconies are projected, again, to sort of create that single, single-story scale, which is really important here. The facade itself, the materiality was given a texture, sort of vertical texture, to reference a lot of the human proportions. The windows themselves are sort of extended vertically, all of which helps create this really kind of small pedestrian family scale within, but still maintaining that kind of relationship with the library that we think is kind of pretty important. And you kind of get a glimpse of that here. This is turning the corner onto Jeremiah, so the, the volume you see in the corner here is basically the same one that looks over the library. So another thing we did was we elevated the brick a story, so again, kind of give a little bit of materiality, a little bit of texture for residents and pedestrians on the ground plane. And then as you turn the corner here, and you get off the Town Hall Drive, it's a civic scale, this is when the building becomes much, much smaller. As you can see, we've created this repetition of a brick bay that repeats all the way down the street. There's a kind of very classical architectural organization of a base, middle, top, represented with some really strong horizontal brick detailing bands. There's even more detail between the windows, there's a lot of richness and texture in the masonry here. And the streetscape itself, same thing, lots of richness, lots of texture with stoops, with heavy planting, as much engagement as we can possibly create for residents of the building and in the sidewalk. The last corner, this is standing at the corner of Jeremiah and Foxglove, Foxglove is to the left, Jeremiah is to the right. The comment here was again, to sort of maybe lighten it up a little bit, this corner volume last time was a lot of masonry, and consequently, it felt pretty heavy. So we thought that was probably pretty accurate, and we also thought, again, to represent this kind of signature move of the project, which is this black-framed corner, very open and transparent at the corner. Again, to have at least a taste of it, smaller-scale version of it at this corner, so take that, take those volumes and bring it down to the appropriate scale, given the residential nature of the street. I'm going to, again, introduce stoops, both along Foxglove and Jeremiah. And zooming in here, you can see the, all the different various layers of detail, the brick cornices, the corbelled brick detail between the windows, the projected balconies, the window trim, there's some cornice details. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on here, which we think is really important at a pedestrian scale, that there's a lot of really interesting things to look at and touch and feel. And then lastly, street-level view, walking up Fox, so this is facing towards Carolina, towards the park. Same kind of repeated masonry bay, same details, same pedestrian activation stoops, and all the things that we know make for great pedestrian streetscapes. Zooming in on that a little bit.
Just to add to what Barrett was mentioning with like textures and materials, so you can see what we're doing at a very pedestrian scale, is to do some interesting brick work in here, so it's not just a brick mass, it's got some, some texture and it's got some life, and, and it just brings a little bit more of an enhanced pedestrian feel, which is what we're really trying to concentrate on. And I think those prior renderings were so far back, they were a little bit dull, you lost that pedestrian feeling of how this is going to look and feel towards those folks walking down the sidewalk. And that's what we really did concentrate on, was, was more of that pedestrian experience. So that is, that's all of the, the new renderings that we have brought tonight. So I guess we're more than welcome to open discussion.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So thank you. I was pretty vocal about this and wanting to be able to see it, especially before we voted on it, a development agreement, especially for this Phase 1A. So thank you for bringing that. Much better. I would agree with you, much, much better. And maybe, maybe, yeah, maybe the other renderings were not as close up, where we could really see and feel. I feel like I could, I feel like I have walked by something similar to this in, in my journeys, and, and they, I could see this being very inviting and very pedestrian-friendly, and so I appreciate that. I love the, the enhanced glass. I think that does something too, as long, along with the, the use of balconies and the different materials. So, so thank you. I appreciate this very much.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something? No, not yet.
I guess if I wanted to say anything, thank you for your comment. I would just simply add that this, this timeline for us is a very advanced-stage timeline from when we're starting construction, this stage, you guys would agree too, where we have these renderings. These are very beautiful renderings, they're a piece of art, in my opinion. We don't have this high-quality level of renderings, and I think they depict a lot of detail. And typically, we don't have this level of detail on, and so I just want to take a credit to Jay Davis, where they came, came through and really presented this level of detail in the design, because it really captures the design a lot more artfully than we typically present in any of our designs as a, as a standard private developer. Thank you.
And if you could just, your name and your role for the record, please?
I don't, I don't know how to define my role, other than I am money gray wall at Singh Development.
Okay, perfect. That's just for the record. Thank you very much. Yeah, it shows the strong partnership, the fact that you went to this next step. Councilmember Robi, followed by Mayor Pretam Garamello, please.
Were you finished with this?
I am. Thank you.
Yeah, could we go to the next, the next slide, please? This, I really believe this is beautiful, this first one. So I appreciate the changes that you've made here. It's hard for me to put my finger on exactly what the changes are. I do like this much better than the last one, but I feel like the, is it the color scheme or the, the balconies? Like what, what am I looking at?
Barrett might elaborate a little bit more eloquently and beautifully, but I, I think there's a number of things, and I think it's a sum of a lot of small parts. I think we've, we've tweaked some colors. Let me zoom into this one a little bit. I think we've modified some of these colors a little bit, we've enhanced some, some details with the brick along here, with, we've poked out some, some details that wrap around these balconies that give a little bit of shadow lines and a little bit more three-dimensionality. These, the ribbing that's going vertical here, we actually did have on the other renderings, but they were just a little flat, so they didn't really show. So I, to that, it was more of a quality of a rendering that didn't come through last time, but we did do a lot of enhancements. The landscaping, I think, has, has done a lot of work, but we also spent a lot of time on, on kind of redesigning this end. And like Barrett mentioned, this was so well-received, and I, I think it was brought up by you, Councilmember Robi, that, that you really enjoyed this elevation part here. So we did work to redesign this end to capture that as well. So I think you're seeing a lot of different things adding up to, to the improvement.
I really think that this is a huge improvement, and, and I would also like to say that I'm very, I appreciate your partnership, because I'm very cognizant.
because I'm very cognizant of the fact that you, you really don't have to make us love this structure in order to put it up. And so I really appreciate your partnership and you're going the extra mile because I do think this is beautiful. And I, you know, I can't, I just cannot wait to see it actually come to fruition. Like I just, every time we see another drawing, I just get so much more excited. And then anyone will tell you that if I'm getting excited about apartments, you've really accomplished something there.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretend Garamella, please.
Yeah, I think the color scheme makes a difference and the fine details which were put in puts a lot of emphasis. And I think it looks excellent. In fact, when you were rendering, I was just thinking if I could rent an apartment on the higher floor on Foxglove and Jeremiah, I think that's what I would pick. But nevertheless, I think, my one question I have is in terms of, can you go to upper slides? The one, the first one that you showed.
This one here or this?
Yeah, this one, this particular one. So this is the view that is directly facing to the town green, right? And I wanted to be cognizant, and in fact, I was talking to Brandon about it, is when you have events going on, the sound barrier will be hitting these directly. And are there any measures taken with the sound attenuation for those glasses? Too early, but I just wanted to ensure like, because your own tenants should not come and complain tomorrow there's too much noise going on. Because I give you example in Wilmington, near the downtown area where the convention center is. There's beautiful amphitheater and all across our, you know, apartments. And I had the same question, you know, but there's something to ensure that they don't come and basically say, hey, I rented it for a quality of life and tomorrow something, you know, goes in. The reason I say that, even in amphitheater, the coca booth, the people who live in Regency Park at the back, they have thicker glass because of that reason. So I don't know if that implies or you have something in your contract putting in, hey, this is going on. Not anything of this money for these people, but I'm, I'm a little, you know, just concerned because this is amazing. The backside, it's not needed because the backside of Jeremiah already is consuming all the sound through this body of thing. But that's just a thought process, but I think excellent.
Well, first off, I would hope that everybody that's facing that side is out at the event, right? Enjoying the park. But we do increase the acoustic value of those windows. We increase the STC rating. It's called Sound Transmission Class. So we do increase that window to protect against those kinds of sounds. And then just the makeup of the wall and the high insulation value and the proper air sealing for all the Energy Star that we will be getting as part of our certification. All of those elements will help. But yes, we do take into account increasing acoustic properties of the building when it faces something with high noise.
That's all I had. Excellent. That you already take.
Thank you very much for the presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nice job. Okay, this time we're at Item 8, Public Address. And now we'll proceed with the public address portion of the meeting. Town Clerk Spillane, do we have anyone signed up for public address?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for this evening, for the public address that we have. We do have some speakers signed up.
Okay.
We have approximately eight individuals.
For public address or public hearing?
I'm sorry?
For public address or public hearing?
Oh, I apologize. I did get ahead of myself. For public comments, we have not received. We do not have anyone signed up this evening.
Okay, so public address is not part of a public hearing, but we give the opportunity for anyone to speak three minutes on any subject or issue using that's not a public hearing. Is anyone in the audience interested in doing that? Okay, great. We'll just move on from there then. Our next item is public hearings. So now we're caught up. So you indicated that there are eight people signed up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so we're actually not going to recognize them yet. We're going to first do a presentation. So we have one public hearing this evening. That's on the proposed amendment to the zoning map for HSNC. At this time, we invite Planner 2, Josh Michael, to come forward to facilitate the discussion.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Josh Michael, Planner 2. So this evening, we will be going over the Hindu Society North Carolina rezoning, REZ 230014. So first, I'd like to give you the item history for this rezoning. The Planning and Zoning Board did see at the July 11th meeting, they decided to vote four to one in favor of approval of the requested zoning map amendment to conditional office institutional, conditional on the dwelling units being a maximum of two to three stories in height. Other concerns included request for additional buffering and limiting the number of multifamily units. Additionally, the Town Council, August 13th meeting, the Town Council closed the public hearing. Town Council requested additional information on several items and expressed concern for traffic impacts along Clements Drive. At the August 27th meeting, the Town Council announced their intent to reopen the public hearing at the September 10th meeting. Staff were instructed to post notices accordingly. So since that August 27th meeting, there are some updates to make you aware of. First, there was a request for an overlay exhibit. An applicant team has added an exhibit in the updated presentation that compares existing HSNC layout with the proposed changes and potential full build outs. For fire safety, the Mooresville Fire Department has reviewed and confirmed their capability to effectively manage fire safety for the temple with a potential height of 100 feet. Additionally, it has been established by staff that dual access points along Aviation Parkway and Clements Drive are required for adequate emergency accessibility. And I'd like to just highlight also that Chief Lozenki is in the audience for any questions that you may have. For the building height, applicant team has updated requirements and added a condition that addresses building height regulations set in place by both the Federal Aviation Administration and the Raleigh Durham Airport Authority. For sidewalk extensions, the applicant team has updated presentation to highlight sidewalk improvements, including aerial photos. As far as infrastructure investment, the applicant team has added information that offers cost estimates for improvements along Clements Aviation and Fairview. These estimates have been reviewed by staff and are consistent with current market costs. And in accordance with municipal regulations, developers are mandated to undertake a specific improvements to the roadways and sidewalks adjacent to their new construction projects. And this requirement ensures that infrastructure upgrades are completed concurrently with any new development. For lighting, the applicant team has introduced a condition aimed at regulating the deactivation of lighting, ensuring a distinction between night event and event days. For traffic impact analysis, the applicant team has more detailed information in the presentation that covers a focus beyond events. And just for, pause for a moment of clarification, in the recent presentation that I gave, it was highlighted that residents on Clements could access Aviation Parkway through the site. For clarity, the town does prohibit using private property to manage public traffic flows. So public roadways have to be sufficient to accommodate current and expected traffic volumes. There was also a mention of additional traffic control officers at key points. Applicant team has updated the traffic management plan to include additional off-duty police at the Clements Drive site access. Staff have communicated with Mooresville Police about this change and highlighted that the TMP specifies that, quote, "An off-duty officer, police officer application will be submitted for all moderate and large events as part of this traffic management plan." The police department will determine the final number of off-duty police officers that will be needed for each event where officers are requested. And we also do have Chief Acosta in the audience as well, if you have any questions for him. Clements Drive and Fairview Avenue. HSNC will add no parking signs along all of Clements, which is on the southwest side of the street, and the cul-de-sac at Fairview. Exact locations of these signs will be determined during the site plan process. It's important to note that HSNC would only be permitted to post these signs on their private property and not in the right of way. However, planning staff have communicated with Public Works and senior administration to establish the process for adding additional no parking signage, should the Town Council deem this appropriate. And the Town Council can then pass a local ordinance that governs parking on town streets. The ordinance would specify where parking is prohibited and would include details of signage to enforce the rules. And finally, Clements Drive. Applicant team has chosen to eliminate the driveway at the cul-de-sac along Clements. Applicant team has updated the sketch plan accordingly and the TMP to reflect the elimination of this access point. So in the previous presentation, this was an access point. It is no longer. So the only access point from Clements would be here. In addition, there are three new conditions that applicant team has offered. Number 19, this development will meet all building height regulations in place by the Federal Aviation Administration and the Raleigh Durham Airport Authority. Number 20, Hindu Society North Carolina will furnish and install no parking signage at the cul-de-sac at Fairview Avenue and on the southwest side of Clements Drive at Post Development's frontage. Exact location shall be determined during the site plan process. And number 21, this development will include a timer to turn off parking lot lighting within 100 feet of Clements Drive at the following times for night event days, 11:00 PM, and for event days, one hour following the end of an event. And just to remind Town Council, these are the properties in question for the rezoning. Couple of updates in the proposed conditions, of course, conforming to the new updated site plan, where appropriate throughout the documents and throughout the conditions. Here for our engineering team did help us rewrite the language a little bit, something that they felt more comfortable with for the share of the light. The new conditions again, and this is the sketch plan updated. And then we do have a presentation by the applicant team. And if the applicant team, once they finish, I can go over staff recommendations and any other additional questions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Brand and I'm with Kim.